Do you do diligence on the airport if it is upgraded and restored?
What portion of the operating budget of the city would the airport be? How big is it? It's a fairly significant airport in a small city.
Their deal with so much now.
Well, right. An issue about trying to define costs is important.
Yeah.
We're going to have to talk. We're going to have to make a recommendation.
I'm from Michigan. There's a lot of municipal airports around there.
Right.
And you're looking at cities of 30,000 people. A airport's about that size. And the smaller towns have a strip maybe.
Soldatna is a bigger city than ours during all of the year, not necessarily during the summer. And their economy is hugely different. And they, I do have their budgets and their numbers. So I do have some background on that. To answer your question, what portion of the budget, I don't know. But I do know roughly where the numbers are.
Mr. Vice Chair, we're on TV.
Okay. Oh, hello. Come to our work session, January 15th of the PACAB. We have before us a discussion of electrical utility. There is no, do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Let's do a roll call.
It's a work session. No, we don't. We have Schneider, Lemus, and Lawrence who are absent.
Everybody else is here. Looks like we have a core. I'm going to have to admit that I don't know a whole lot about this topic. I had bounced a couple of thoughts on what this was about, and I was wrong. This is strictly a discussion of rates and practices. We do not have a utility manager here. We have Harbor Master Regis, who may be able to give us some background that we could ask for. And then we should have a discussion of some sort. But I don't think we're going to have anything of substance that we're going to pass along to the city. I may be wrong. They'll be able to benefit from our discussion.
Could we get the exact title of the council's work session next week? Do we know what that is?
It's a presentation by, excuse me, I just came from the dentist, so I might be talking weird.
And drooling?
And drooling, yes. So the discussion next week with council is a presentation by the electric department on the rates and I believe the rates and the infrastructure.
Okay. I thought it was more related to the, do we want to sell the utility question?
I can try to pull up the.
That's what I was just trying to do.
Board Member Paquette, my understanding is that that will be a follow-up discussion for divestiture or privatizing, that I think the current discussions are still how the utility is functioning and what the rate structure is as far as, I think there's been a lot of question about how the rates are actually determined and presented. I do get an electrical bill myself, or our company does. I have looked at it. I can tell you that I've compared it to rates at Golden Valley rates in Fairbanks, Golden Valley rates in Healy, my Chugac rate in Moose Pass. If you separate the charges for individual monthly charges, there are some pluses and minuses in the Seward billings that don't show up in other places. But the rates for the electricity per kilowatt hour is close. There's not a whole lot of difference. None of those, they all have a fuel surcharge, which is dependent upon where they're buying power. And if we wanted to talk about how that works, I can explain that. I do understand how power is wheeled through the utility. But I don't know that that's necessary for this discussion. Is there a feeling on the board about where Seward rates are? We have some business people and residents both paying different utility rates and different things.
I'd like to comment on that. In my experience, I've been employed at several large rate payers in town and much, as far as the commercial side, any disputes over the rates or how much they're paying, they seem to be related to metering issues and the customers understanding what they're actually paying for, demand charges, power factor charges, and not so much that the rate itself is too high, but there's some miscommunication involved. And usually that's been able to be corrected when, you know, the right people get involved. And then on your comment about the actual rates themselves, Mr. Vice Chair, I believe, I agree with you that the rates are consistent with rates across the general region here. And well, they might be higher than lower 48. That's to be expected. And I don't see a particular problem there as far as the cost per kilowatt hour.
I agree with you. I think there is a perception or a misunderstanding. And actually, the whole meter issue was the hot ticket item. And I wish Manager Foltz was here.
Vice Chair, so I pulled it up. So the council discussion on January 20th will be discuss electric department rates, classifications, utility, infrastructure management, current contract regarding power factor adjustment penalty, current status slash process of selling electric utility, update on current demand meter project, update on air-to-air project, clarify billing, and timeline or schedule for pole replacement. That's what it is for January 20th.
Wow. So we're on target as far as that. And I don't know, I really don't understand how our work session is going to advantage that.
I, Vice Chair, I do have one issue that I've always really had a hard time with. I don't know if I should bring it up in this meeting or wait till council or what. I've always had a hard time with the fact for businesses that they are charged a higher monthly usage rate than the citizens, residential users. If you want to promote business in any community, you want to make it so certain things are equitable and fair. And I've never had a reasonable explanation for the justification for a higher rate for businesses. Does that mean, I mean, are they saying that businesses can afford it and the residents can't? There are some businesses that are just barely treading water.
And then some businesses get big bonus breaks. So it's not equitable even among businesses.
And I just, in America, I've always had a feeling of fair play, and I just don't think that's fair.
Council Member McLean?
These are my comments, my personal comments, not of the council. But as a business owner, I don't, I have, I benefit from actually having another place to do my business, which is a nonprofit. But a lot, I would say, if you look around the town, how many businesses are open in the summer? How many businesses are open in the winter? When you take that usage away, then the bills tend to rise because we have this usage, right? And then it goes away. So large users, I said go now that's off of their special contract, large restaurants that are off of their, you know, off for the winter. I don't know if that's the reason why, but it seems to be as well to the usage of those, of some businesses who operate generally or mostly in the summer and then pull away that usage in the winter. It's the same thing if we look at housing issues where we have people in, who are doing home rentals in the summer and then closing down in the winter and not using their homes. So the response to that was to raise the rates for the connected reconnect, to discourage people from connecting and reconnecting these homes that they were just leaving for the wintertime. I'm not sure if that's the reason why, but I do think that there is a little bit of share that could happen because of that reason.
Vice Chair, so on those businesses, like he explained, is they are being phased out, Sea Life Center was one and Fishes the other. They are being phased out of that discount, I guess you want to call it, on electric. I'm not sure if they're there yet. That's like a question for the electric department.
Who's being phased out?
The Fisheries and Sea Life Center, I believe.
Are you seeing discounts?
There was a special contract.
Yeah.
Sea Life Center is the only one now? I believe so.
Because I think we did phase them out, the same thing, we phased out during their lease.
I think the Sea Life Center is the only one. The icicles off, and then it used to be the whole facility, and they were off. Or they even stopped operating.
And I know one thing, in 2021 or '22, the new agreement with Chugac, what we're going to pay them, they're going to start negotiating that. Since we lost Sunny Hill, we did get JAG back, which is drawing a lot of juice, so that can be negotiated. Maybe it'll get low, I don't know. But that's, I know that's coming up. It was mentioned before, and I just, I don't know the exact date, so.
Well, I know, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the rate is determined by usage. The overall rate for the city of Seward is determined by usage. But at the same token, you have these users that have no revenue coming in in the winter months, can't sustain payment on electrical connections, so they opt to disconnect. So they're not paying this usage charge. And raising it hasn't, yeah, you're just, you're trying to discourage that, but at the same token, you're penalizing these people because they don't have business revenue coming in. And that's not fair. I'm sorry. It is not fair.
So I know one thing, right now, they're still dropping the rates down in the winter and bringing it back up in the summer to help deter, I mean, but he was right about, because when they shut the power off, the rest of us that stay here have to pick up the slack.
So if I may play devil's advocate there for a moment, the, and I don't know for sure if this is one of the contributing factors, but the larger users do require beefier infrastructure to be maintained, whether they're using that power or not. So if a company wants to operate only a few months a year in the summertime and draw megawatt, that'd be an eighth of the total demand, there's a much larger cost for that than there is for powering a string of houses. And I would suggest that if we pursued that, that might be one of the factors why there's a high rate for businesses. And in fact, you'd be asking the residential customers to be subsidizing the equipment, the infrastructure to pay or to be available for the businesses when they need it. And that would be also, I suppose, not fair.
It's like, let me give you an example of something that may not relate, but I, my mother-in-law owns a house, or owned a house, still does, even though she's passed away, in Saratoga, Wyoming. The house has been condemned. It has water and sewer and electrical connections that are not active. Yep, the community of Saratoga continues to charge them for that connectivity, even though there's no one that can live in that house because it has bestest shingles in it. It's been abandoned for 12 years. And it's a similar thing. You're charging people. I do think we need to differentiate between normal-scale users and large-scale users, okay? And I don't think that you should be penalizing the small-scale users and businesses who are making no revenue whatsoever in the winter months. Now, in my case down there at the harbor, everything is turned off except electrical. So I have to have electrical to run the heater when the pipes are off. But again, I had to pay an exorbitant water and sewer disconnect, even though I actually paid an assessment for the building of that whole facility of water and sewer, which I've already paid off. So you tell me where that fairness is at. And if you can prove that to me, I will stop saying anything.
If I might, this is really the juncture of policy. You create utilities to benefit someone, and generally, generally the someone leads the charge. Seward developed around an industry that brought power into Seward, and the residents has benefited from that power. Somewhere along the line, we start applying social policy to those decisions. And I think Carl is correct in when talking about fairness, this is generally social policy. How the rates are structured, they're complex, but it is because the larger users require a certain service. It's what's, they have to have a spending reserve, they have to have the capability to grow into that higher demand, the utility, the generating, the facility. So they're paying a lot of money for equipment, that when everyone shuts down, they're still paying that money. Now, that's a standalone charge on your bill. That's generally not automatically rolled into the rates, although there's a set-aside power cost that's involved with that, that is in the rates by, and these are regulated by federal standards. Public utilities and FERC both regulate these things. But when it comes down to fairness, and we own our utility, and this is something that'll go away if the city no longer owns the utility, because Chugac will not be responsive to what's necessarily what the residents want. How can that be, that cost be spread around fairly so the larger users, those people that raise the utility needs and then go away, pay their fair share? That's a social policy. And it'll be for the council to decide primarily, or even the plebiscite. But I think that as far as the rates being unfair, I wouldn't disagree with that, Board Member Hughes. I know that it's unequal, and unfortunately, the poorest of people pay the same expense, which is a higher percent of their net worth, if you will, than the wealthy. And for those who are of advantage to sneeze at that, say, well, it's irrelevant, that's not fair.
Nice. Vice Chair, real quick.
Norm, and then Phil.
If we, if you, so we got to council meeting on the 20th. If you have questions, write them down, type them, whatever, give them to Jessica, because Jessica can compile them, and then she can forward that to council, that council can ask those questions at that 20th meeting. Because they're not here to answer your questions today. I'm going to try the best that I can to answer your questions, but I don't know all those answers.
Okay, well, we'll try to make a list. We'll probably complete early today, but we'll have a list. We'll include.
It's like his question would be great for that.
Right. Phil?
Vice Chair, I agree with you totally. The one issue we always got to maintain is what do we do with our lower-income people? And that's a tough battle that utilities across the country have dealt with forever. How do we socially make an equitable system? And rate structures across the board are so complex, as Bruce mentioned. It's one big giant can of worms, and welcome to it. You know, we just got to keep tweaking things. If we see, you know, one group suffer, we adjust.
Board Member Paquette?
So I appreciate all the comments so far. There's a couple of things that stand out to me. Over the last couple of years, we had the meter exchange program, and it seems like there were an awful lot of hiccups with that, and that we really do need like a final debriefing on where that stands. And then related to that on a side issue is, these are all still meters that will not do net metering. So we still have that whole issue in terms of expanding our utility and allowing people to do reusables or renewables. Then the other thing that has happened in the last couple of years that I think we need a debriefing on is, it's the rates and the rate structure in terms of this business of they go down in the winter, they go up in the summer. I think there is a built-in distrust now among the citizens between the way the meter thing rolled out and then the way that rate thing rolled out, that I think the citizens need to really understand what's happened. And then we own the utility, that's a fair statement, but we don't own the power. We're just reselling the power. And so the bigger question that doesn't even look to be in this, in the description of the work session next week is, you know, let's start producing our own power. Or, I mean, there's, I just, I still don't believe that there's no, there are no options for us to produce our own power. And I know the hydro, 20%, that's 20%, but I just really feel like there must be other things that we're not looking at. And businesses are paying more under the rate structure, as I understand it. So those are my comments at this point.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Tyler Clarkson. I might be switching topics just a little bit here. I thought this would be the right board to sort of share some of this information with. So I'm working, we're working with some folks in Kenai, Soldatna, and Homer.
Who's "we"?
There's some folks in.
Who's "we"? You said "we're" working?
There's individuals, there's loosely affiliated groups in Kenai, Soldatna, and Homer across the peninsula. And they've recently undertaken initiative to form a sustainability commission at the borough level. And I've just recently gotten involved in that initiative, and sort of relates to some of the renewable power and some climate change sort of issues as well, broadly speaking. So that's one thing they're working on that's generally, I want to bring that to the board's attention. Closely related to that is a proposal with the university, UAA, University of Alaska. It's a, they're accepting conceptual proposals for technical assistance for Alaskan communities. I don't know if that's on your guys' radar or not. Essentially, it's saying that what type of technical assistance can they provide to communities in terms of climate change planning, resilience, technical infrastructure, renewable power, something like that. So it's, we provided some feedback in terms of, I think, some information about what Seward might be looking for. So we've been contributing to that process. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention and just.
What's the name of the group?
I'm getting involved in that, you know.
What's the name of the group?
Kenai Peninsula Sustainability. I think the, for Kenai, it's called Kenai Change. I think that's the actual, I don't know, group name out of Kenai that started, and the, I think they wanted to form a Kenai Peninsula Borough Sustainability Commission to formalize it. I think they said they were, they had some success in passing some sustainability language, and that they're working on submitting a formal proposal to actually form a commission. So yeah, I just want to bring that to your attention.
This would be a commission to the borough?
To the borough, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Oh. That was quick. Okay, so we have a couple items to, a couple questions. I had a question.
I just want, I don't know if that's with the Climate Action Plan or not, but that was, there was possible funding from UAA for the Climate Action Plan. There's, right now, they're just requesting information about what the communities want to see in a climate action plan. And we've submitted all of that information from the first meeting that we had with the paperman and Christie. And they were looking for other communities that were trying, wanting to get involved so that they could get together and show interest and apply for a large grant rather than smaller grants. So the large grant, then they could break up and possibly put feet on the ground where some, they would have somebody trying to facilitate a climate action plan and assessing the needs of the community. That again is only my personal comments.
No, I think that, Council Member McLean, thank you. I think we have a climate action plan. I don't know that we've had a presentation.
Well, I don't think we have a plan.
I'm sorry, we have a committee.
We have a committee.
We have a committee. And I don't think we've had a presentation from, I didn't get his name.
That's Tyler Pot. He is the Parks and Rec Director for the city of Seward.
That's what, okay.
There's supposed to be a meeting.
Yeah, I was looking, I'll look it up.
And then they are moving into March, so.
Did they move it already?
Well, these things are all kind of interwoven. Phil got the renewable mindset, and we've got the heat pump thing, and we've got the utility structure, privatized or not, the cost and metering, they're all interwoven. And I think it probably creates a lot of confusion in the general public, because they're, they probably hear that portion of it that directly affects them. But unfortunately, you can't separate them. I mean, and I think, Board Member Paquette is absolutely right about generation of power. We have a generating capability here, but it's so expensive, it's only standby. You know, trying to develop a renewable energy source makes a lot of sense, but that's down the road, long time down the road before these meters, the meters will be all swapped out by then, I hope, when the answer questions answered. But I'd like to bring some of these questions that we've had to, to actual, discussions we've had, to actual questions. We talked about the impact of low income on low-income users. We talked about standby charges for equipment generation of the major utilities. We talked about the meter status, which is on the agenda, as I understand it already. We talked about rates, which, you know, that's on the.
And how about clarifying business rates versus?
Well, I think that's a good question. You know, I'd really like to understand the justification for different users' rates, and so would those users.
Right. So I do have something I would like maybe added to that list, and let me qualify it first. So on the scenario as, as the rates and structuring and rating is in existence now, there's no benefit for anyone who goes to a renewable user, a renewable usable energy source, thereby lowering their electrical usage, which in turn raises the rates. How is, I mean, in the lower 48, and I realize we're not in the lower 48, thank God, they down there, so many places, if you do create some sort of renewable energy system such as solar power or wind, and you connect to the grid, they actually will, we already know that they will buy it from you, but at the same token, they don't increase your rate for usage. When you do go back, they actually offer you an incentive rate, because down there, they have this huge 48-state grid that can get overloaded. And so they want, in some capacity, a certain amount of renewable energy usage to be fed back into the grid. And I think if we're truly serious about having people, we say we are, but we don't seem to be making much progress that way, if we're truly serious about people being able to introduce renewable energy into the system so our system isn't loaded down so much, that I really think, and I realize there's technical issues that the electrical department keeps bringing up, but I think it's really important that we somehow, some way resolve this so there is an incentive for some people, because there are some renewable energy systems out there that are in existence that do nothing, don't help the city of Seward in any way, shape, or form because of the restrictions in place.
I guess my comment would be is certainly putting up solar panels, reducing your load, affecting rates for everybody. No question about it. As does that LED light bulb that you put into your lamp to replace that incandescent bulb, right? So we got all this energy efficiency stuff that changes things. On the flip side, I would like to see some credit, because I got two heat pumps running in my house. I'm using two, three times electricity as my neighbor is. I get no credit for that. So it's a big can of worms.
Yep.
That's all I got to say. And personally, I am not, I have improved the rates for residential customers with my heat pumps far more than my couple solar panels will increase them, so I don't know.
So with the, if I may, with the contract negotiations coming up, we have to, we were buying so much electricity from Chugac, that wasn't the contract. If we don't buy it, we still have to, I mean, we have, we don't use it, we still have to pay for it. pay for it. That's why hopefully this, this new contract negotiations will come do something and hopefully, because right now, we're also paying for their lines. We're renting their lines for them to bring a part. That's another reason why. This is from what I just been, meetings that I've heard, so, I mean, you can ask the electric department on, on the 20th, but we're also paying for that. And we do have part of Bradley Lake, we all know that, but it's not enough. But, yeah, I just think hopefully this new negotiations can say, we're not using that much power anymore, let's reduce it. And maybe, you know, it's all about, yeah, I don't know how it's going to work or anything, so, but as a start.
I think it's like Mr. Cluiz has said, it's very, very complicated.
Mayor Terry?
I don't want to get in the discussion other than I was going to ask the clerk to provide the information that PACAB's already made recommending, you know, credits with the heat pumps, but maybe if the board itself could ask for that information to be provided to council, because you're, the board's already made a determination on that. So that would be great to have for Monday night.
Wouldn't council have that information already?
If it's, I mean, we would, but I mean, it's-
Renew it, to renew it.
Have it that night.
Yeah. Without objection, I think that the board would ask the clerk to provide that information.
We can't take action at a work session, though, can we?
Well, I mean, you're making, you're asking questions.
Yeah.
I mean, you could just say, you know, PACAB's already made a determination on that. It would be good to make sure council has that.
Right, it's a past thing that we-
Yeah, yeah, it's a past thing.
So it's the interconnect policy that you want to do?
No, I mean, yeah, that would be great too, honestly. Interconnect policy and then also last year PACAB made recommendations for rebates with the heat pumps.
Right. Which was carried to council, I thought.
Just to council. I mentioned it during the budget sessions and I'm sorry, I don't know for sure that it was included in the budget, but we need to talk about it.
These are all good questions for that, that work session with council and the electric department.
Harbor Master Regis has brought up the negotiations with Chugak. There's a lot of things that are going to weigh into that that weren't, weren't available previous, and that is renewables. There's a significant renewable generation capacity along the Intertight today. Golden Valley has Eva Crick production, which is actually a moneymaker for them. Fire Island, Chugak buys power from Fire Island. They had to be drug to the table, but they do. And that's actually reducing the generating, the needs. The, the generating capacities of the major utilities in Anchorage have been modernized and streamlined. They're, they're 35% more efficient than they were historically. Certainly, energy efficiency i- is a major thing. It's never going to replace generating, I don't believe it's ever going to, utility generation needs. I think that's something that we're going to, and in sustainable communities, as I understand it, that infrastructure is essential. You're looking for public utilities in sustainable communities. If everyone has offsite or onsite septic and water, that's not a sustainable vision. Sometimes it's required. Our Alaska lifestyle makes us all independent, but towns that have tied utilities, which includes electric, is our method of civilization, our manner of civilization. How to make it efficient, you know, how to be fair. I mean, those are, how does, how does the council going to view fairness? Is, 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 is low income consideration? I mean, I think there are plenty of people, we all play lip service to low income people. We all appreciate that. But does everybody establish policy based on low income people? I don't think so.
It's an interesting question when you say, does anybody establish policy on low income people? Because right now, last week when we went to the early childhood learning, talking about the Title I pre-K, we are, the, the principal introduced an interesting situation. He said, they need 35% of that, that population, the childcare population, their whole school, to be low income. We're at 34%. So we're short 15 kids in the low income category because people are thesis, because people are leaving. Now, we can't have pre-K because we don't have the low income people to have a pre-K. So when we're thinking about rates and we're thinking about all these things, and I struggle to pay my electric bills sometimes too, you know, and I'm not in low income. But sometimes there's a give and take for things, you know? There's people in different rate categories all over that struggle to pay bills at different levels because of different reasons. But that's just an interesting situation when you say that, do people make policy because of low income people? And where we can think about, you know, talking about businesses or other people subsidizing, what, who's subsidizing you and what's happening? But that's a big give and take and a big curve for everyone. And I was not aware of that and the mayor was there with me and it was really open, like, opened my eyes to say, we depend on those people for services that everybody uses. So it's an interesting question then, Jake.
It is. I, I didn't mean to just create any kind of a value opinion.
Oh, yeah.
That wasn't it. But there, there is, there is a parallel. And that is, it was a battle that I was involved with when I lived in Cooperlanding 45 years ago. And Chugak charged us as rural clients, at that time it was 17 cents a kilowatt hour, where Anchorage was at five and a half. We, we determined, we're able to present to their CEO, Bud Schultz, that the reason that they were qualified for REA Rural Electrification Administration loans was because of our presence. And, and we weren't getting credit for that. As it, as it turned out, they raised the rates in Anchorage by about a quarter cent a kilowatt hour and brought ours, our rural rates into parity with, with town. So it's a similar parallel. You know, we as the disadvantage, if you will, were creating a benefit to the advantage that, that was leveled out. And, and I think that's a policy decision that the council can, and the electrical department can consider. I'm not exactly sure how, how you determine who qualifies for these different categories. You know, that could be another issue, but-
It's just in the broad scale of things, you know? When we think of one, why do businesses pay this or why does somebody else pay that? It really all, you got to look at it at the whole, whole picture, you know?
And frankly, Councilmember McLean, I, I don't really understand why a economic engine like the, the fishery, the cannery, or the Sea Life Center is asked to pay such a high burden. I know they, they demand a lot of electrical service, but think about what would happen without them.
Hey, my last comment on, on the regulatory stuff, we have the Regulatory Commission of Alaska that deals with the majority of the utilities in the state. We certainly can use them as a guidance to how they have been dealing with these rate issues for the last 30 years. You know, at least some guidance and what our big users should be using relative to the little guys and move on. We're fortunate, in a lot of ways, we don't have to follow their strict rules. But I think we should be using them as a, as a guidance as we look at our rates.
I might add one thing to that, Phil, and that's, they do establish some guidelines. And one of the things that we suffer from, when I did look at my, my bills from different places, the Seward bill is the most difficult to understand because they don't explain it as well as Golden Valley, for instance. Simple explanations.
I think that's going to be at the 20th meeting, I believe. Yeah, I hope so too.
You know, looking at this guy, I pay about close to a bucket, not $2 a kilowatt for my 10 kilowatts of electricity I use on my boat a month in the winter time, right? It's just keeping my batteries topped up and I'm paying the $25 service charge to have that ability to make sure my sump pump can pump when, when it needs to. And, you know, it's kind of brutal, but, you know, I realize it costs money to have that power maintained down there in the docks. I can complain, but I understand.
So, so just for informational, I pay the same as the businesses. I don't, shitty doesn't get a discount. I don't get a discount as a city entity. I pay the same as you. But everything past that meter, wires, everything to the docks, I have to maintain. And it's expensive. Everything down there is stainless steel. Everything has to be marine proof and it's expensive. And I, I don't like, but that's the, we, we used to bounce it around a lot, but now we just kind of maintain an even, an even bill and it fluctuates throughout the year because every month you see that fuel surcharge go up and down. We try to maintain it at one price so you don't get those high spikes and low spikes.
10 kilowatts a month, I don't really-
Yeah, yeah, but, but, I mean, we see it. I mean, it's, it's, sometimes we, we go into loss and sometimes we gain it back. So we came up with a, you know, that's just-
And in doing that, do you get much pushback? I mean, it-
Well, yeah, we have people that say, why is it so high? And I explain the same reason why, because I have to maintain everything on the docks.
But there must be say, some feel that they're getting a real bargain too.
Yeah, we don't, I mean-
No?
You have no option.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, you have no option. You want power, so some people will actually turn their power off. We did make some changes to help out the customers. If you leave, you could turn it off and we won't bill you the service charge, but, you know, power's still in your name. We give you a lock, you can lock it up. And then we put somebody in there. So it's trying to help, help the customer a little bit more, but it's the price of the kilowatts. I mean, it's nuts and that, that fuel surcharge drives me nuts too. And Carl knows, he, he's down there too, he has boats down there too.
He's got a boat in the water right there.
Yeah.
I just, I always have a problem and, and, and I'm, it's just a side note, it really doesn't apply here, but I always have a problem paying a fuel surcharge for a gas plant that sends its electricity to Anchorage only. It doesn't come here, but we pay the fuel surcharge.
Well, I'm not going to try to defend Chugak or MLP, but they put power into the, the, the wire-
Into the grid, I understand.
And it goes everywhere.
And this is line losses, which we have to-
That's a problem.
Pay for, line loss.
And we, we've made some inroads in solving that problem too. We've upgraded sections of it. I think we, if I remember correctly from John's last report, we only have one section left to, maybe I'm wrong, on the main line coming in.
Have we got something to present to council?
I have a couple of questions here, and I can go over them.
Would you please?
And then add anything that I missed. Justification for different users' rates, how to make electric rates fair, who qualifies for what levels of income? And that's what I have so far. What else did I miss?
That sounds good.
Well, the meter status is on the agenda already and the rates were already on the, on the agenda, so, and I think that pretty well covered the, the-
I think if you have any more questions, just-
Sure.
Send them to Jessica and Jessica can, I don't know how it works, but I think maybe let everybody know what the question was and it can be forwarded to council. I think that's how it works.
Well, I learned last week that-
I do have a question. I think somebody here is going to be able to answer. Now, like I say, we, we installed these new meters and weren't they, were they, did they have the ability to be read remotely?
Yes.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm not going to make sure.
I think there's just a, if it doesn't get read and they send out one of the utility clerks to go, clerks to go read it, for some reason doesn't read it, so.
So they're made, they're able to be read without having to send a reader around?
You have to send a reader around. But he just drives, he does-
They don't have to get out of the car?
Correct. They just drive to a certain area and I think they got it where they just drive and it picks up all the readings or sits one location. I'm not exactly sure.
And I think we all know that when there's that change, there's always a confusing first bill, either too much or too little, that very first bill.
Too low, some had too low, some had too high and then some had a lot too high.
I guess one comment, this whole rate, summer, winter and all the confusion that it creates, and I guess I've never understood why we can't provide a flat rate for people, which is really what we're doing by lowering our rates in the winter and raising them in the summer. We are sort of balancing out their, their cost monthly.
We did have-
Why we can't, like all the other utilities, offer a flat rate to customers and they'll know that they're going to be paying $78, you know, a month, summer and winter, and they can budget accordingly. I guess I've never understood why we use it.
Will the fuel adjustment factor change as month to month?
Right, so, but at the end of the year, you kind of adjust for that.
You can still do that.
You can still do that. You can do, if you, it'll take last year's bill and average it out and you pay that average. You can do that yourself, just go into there.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. So you can go in there and just say, hey, so your bill is $1,200 a year. Okay, I want to pay $100 a month. And then it fluctuates. You know what I mean? You know what I mean though, right? I know that's the low end, but I was just trying to use it, because I'm already drooling over it.
What that's doing is asking your utility essentially finance your charges.
Well, it'll balance out.
To equalize it, your, your monthly expenses.
You can do that now.
Right.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's an option.
Anything else from our attendees for the board? Comments?
And all I can do is apologize for me drooling. I'm sorry about the electric department not being here, so.
As far as questions for, did we have the Intertight agreement on there? The status of current-
I think that is, was on there.
The status of what?
And that's supposed to be-
Of status of any current applications.
There you go, yeah.
Information.
Good question.
What about, cut?
No, I, I'm, I'm just waiting for the day that we can do that meeting, so.
So the, the rate negotiations are 2021, 2021, right?
I'm not exactly sure of the year, but I think it's 20, you see, that's another question, but I think it's 2021, from what I heard.
I have to remember, yeah.
Yeah, 2021.
I'd like to thank Councilmember McLean and Mayor Terry for attending and everyone else. There is, what had been the ARCTEC board has been reformed and that probably will have some significance in the Intertight. Your question is probably really appropriate in how is that functioning? Because the, the sharing that we're talking about in the lower 48 and other places, which has always been a problem in Alaska. We don't have the, the ties, the loops of power lines that they do in other places.
Yeah, I don't know when he comes in and gives a report, but Mayor Terry, do you remember when he's supposed to come and do reports to council, the person we have in the ARCTEC?
Well, that'd be Kevin Dunham.
Well, it's Kevin Dunham. I don't know that they're pre-scheduled. I don't know when the last-
Okay.
They're making progress on it. They really are. And I think it's not too far down the road and it will, it will affect all these discussions we've had today. Daryl just showed up. Daryl, we're just about to done, but, you know, we've talked a lot about rates and you have a lot of knowledge about the Sea Life Center rates and, and fairness. Does that light a fuse?
I'm getting a bit removed from the Sea Life Center. I've not been down there in a half now, but I do have a lot of history with rates. And I tell everybody consistently, the electric rate will never be cheaper than it is today. I think that's a prude of them. No matter what we're doing, I don't think it'll ever be cheaper. Sea Life Center has this, they're the largest electric bill. I think at one of the meetings, well, the-
Forum.
The forum of the last, was that last Wednesday? Jag was commenting about their electric bill. It doesn't reach, but the Sea Life Center's bill is averaging.
And they were surprised by it. And they had done their, their due diligence and pre-looking at it. They were surprised by the amount.
And I-
The center is averaging $50,000 plus a month now, probably.
Well, if I, if I remember, that marine lift with all the electric motors in there was one of, well, Vico and Pruitt and Vigor, they all complained about that.
Yeah, well, that's it.
Draws a lot of juice, sir.
Takes a lot of power, yeah. I mean, it's not something that's on all the time. Like the Sea Life Center, they're loads consistent 20, 20 hours, about 24 hours a day, so. There are various. I don't have any good, magical answers to electric rates in Seward. I don't, you know, I'd say I don't, I don't see, I don't think they're going to get lower.
I think that, not as a hard master, not as a senior player, I just think if they sell to whoever, whatever companies, if they looked at it before, if it is Chugak's, the rates will go down, they won't be paying that rental fee of the lines. So they were talking about it, probably would go down.
Right, I think that would have to be negotiated. I suspect that they'll set up a separate entity that would charge themselves.
Something, but I know that Homer Electric is looking at it and what's that one in the Valley, MLP or?
MEA.
MEA. I know they were all looking. I don't know where that negotiated.
I don't know, this is going to be a topic that, I mean, I-
That's going to have to come before council. That's gonna have to come before council.
Well, it's a question that Christie's asked here, what status of that question is, I think it's coming up on the twentieth, so, along with a lot of other things, I haven't moved the electric for weeks, and I, yeah, I've got a bit of background, history, and the whole discussion with selling utility, and that's something that I was involved with a bit during my tenure with the city, it's a lot of years ago now, and there never was the right deal that came along that would adequately compensate the city for what it would be giving up in return for selling to another entity. You gotta bear in mind, in good portion of the city's operating budget is derived from paying a little tax and a little subsidy from the city covers from the electric industry. We could never see where it would be recoverable just in property taxes, because so much of the asset resides outside the city, so say, Chugak's or Homer bought it, you can only tax them on the asset that consists of being in corporate interest, and all of that, T-line and all that, that resides substationally, resides outside of the city, be taxable by the hurdle, so, plus the ability to kind of determine your future as far as your electric utility, one big question is, what are you gonna do if we're on a standby plant? Previously, in my experience, they didn't have anything to do, happy to have staff maintaining standby, without that, sort of, it's a little bit of a hurt, so, those are things that might change now.
They did change, they did say they would take over the plant and manage the generation plant, that's what John said at one meeting, I don't know which meeting it was.
What are they gonna put in their writing?
Yeah, well, that's just it, it's all about that.
Buy that two hundred thousand dollars a year.
The meeting on the twentieth won't deal with that topic, though, I don't think.
It's on, so basically, we just put everything on the list, if we get to everything in two hours, I doubt it.
Yeah.
But just to make sure that, you know, topics were on there, in case, in case we broach that.
That raises a question that I'd like to add to that, and that's the portion of revenue that's derived by the utility from inside the city and outside the city, that should be available.
So, I mean, it's really having a continued discussion on, it may be economics, it may be the, may Pessaloff look a little good now, we'll do that, but I don't think you're gonna see a big change in the rate.
Well, I think the goal, even when we built Bradley Lake and other places, was to hold the rates, or to slow the increase, and all renewables do is transfer costs from one generating source to another, it doesn't automatically reduce the actual costs of that to the user, but we have other spin-off benefits, obviously, we have the carbon issues, and frankly, I've said before, I'm a lover of gravity, you know, good Lord gave us the opportunity to use water that flows down off the mountains, we ought to use it, but it's
You just figure out, here is a challenge, there's not that perfect water source here, but the biggest regret I have, literally, now, like, looking back at my time with the city, must be the city not being able to share it any way.
But you did get some, Daryl, you did get some.
Well, we got one percent.
Yeah, yeah, you did get some.
If we had picked up ten percent, we wouldn't be having a policy any of this, so, we'd be paying four, four and a half cent kilowatt hour of wholesale prices, without we being charged.
All right, well, is there any other things that you can think we should add for questions? And as Harbor Master Regis has mentioned, if you have additional questions, send them in an email to Jessica, and
I'll send an email out after the work session with the questions that I have right now, and then just asking, I'll add anything to it that you have. And one reminder I did wanna give everyone is, you got that email from Chair Snyder today, even though she sent it on Monday, so at the top, she requested that I forward it to everyone, that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act, that's why it is provided as a laydown. So just keep that in mind when you send stuff up.
And for other board members, I'm aware that when we communicate, you have to be very careful that you don't communicate to all, that if you want to converse with, I think, two other board members, you can do that, or if you want it to go to the everyone, then send it to the board, thank you, Mayor, send it to the clerk, who then can, then put it in the public record.
Before we all break away, I just wanna have a question, the meeting's at two o'clock at the
Yes, library, yes.
Upstairs, right?
Downstairs.
Oh, the downstairs?
Yeah, downstairs.
And does Daryl know about that?
I do.
Okay, good.
Okay, if, motion adjourned, your motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second?
Okay.
Adjourned at twelve fifty-five.
Therefore, ah, well, you're here for this, thank you.
Hey, Tony.